Hi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to start our meeting. It's about three past seven. Could we all stand and?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zoning Board of Appeals, July seventeen nineteen. July nineteen twenty seventeen. Okay, we're gonna uh, we are reorganized the board. If you remember last meeting, we reorganized the board, however, it was not on the agenda. You know, spoken to our attorney, so we need to do it tonight. But before we do that, I'm gonna read a letter that our former chairman Peter Karen sent to the Board of Selectmen. Stated, June twenty eighth twenty seventeen, Dear Honorable Selectmen, please accept my resignation from the zoning board of appeals effective July first twenty seventeen. Cecily yours, Peter Karen. And as some of us expressed at the last meeting, we've lost somebody that we, I worked with him, whole time I was on the board, I worked with him. As well as Joe Pacheco, and we get a lot of knowledge and experience from him, and whatever we do forward is a lot of space then to work at these things prior. So, we're gonna reorganize the, the board. I'm gonna step down because I'm presently the acting chairman. And we'll open up the nominations for chairperson.
All right, I nominate Ken Pacheco as chairman.
I second the nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna nominate Bob Pacheco as.
Bob Adams.
Your brother?
There's so many people.
We're talking about the water.
Uh, I'm gonna nominate Bob Adams to the, for vice chairman of the, the board.
I'll second the nomination.
Any discussion? Any other nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No oppose? Bob Adams now vice chairman. I'm gonna nominate Greg Logan as our clerk. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No oppose? So, the board has been reorganized. Tonight is not gonna be a long meeting, hopefully.
So you can tell by the crowd, right?
Yes. Did everybody sign in? All the public sign in, Ross?
I think they did.
The guy in the back didn't. Just kidding.
The first case I, that's on, on the old business is the two eighty-one Tremont Street. This is a case that's been hanging around a little bit. I've had conversations with Marguerite as well as, as was Zach. Uh, we were gonna, uh, we thought about reconsidering this, vote on this, but we would not be able to take any additional information on this case, so we'd be basically voting on the information that we had the last time, so that's not never anything good.
Right.
I gave the petition to Eric Perry two options. Either we can have the decision written, and it's a denial, and he can appeal it, which is repeated his intention, or he could withdraw the petition, and then we file it again, which means that he would notify the abutters. We would post it in the paper again, we would rehear the case again, and hopefully we'd have more information on what the position was on the, on the abutters. For the record, nobody showed up at the final hearing, at the even that we voted on. Uh, he called me today, and he's decided that he would just like us to write up the decision, and he's gonna appeal that, that decision. So I notified our attorney, Marguerite Mitchell, today that we're going to proceed with the decision. He has signed an extension to our next meeting, which will be August sixteenth. Uh, and the decision, because Marguerite's gonna be away on vacation, won't be written until the week after next. Uh, but it still gives us time to, everybody to sign it. So you'll be notified, Zach, you're a voting member, I think Greg and Bob are voting members. You'll be notified to come in here unless you've got some vacation.
Kenny, I'm a little confused. He said that he is gonna, he's not gonna withdraw without prejudice.
Right.
He wants us to sign this decision, and we've already voted on it, right?
We voted. It's gonna be written.
It's gonna be written, and then you mentioned something about it, August, he's gonna come to us. What is he?
No, he's not.
No. He, he signed an extension, given us to write the decision until August sixteen, which is our next meeting.
Oh, to, to that, okay, okay.
Marguerite has assured me that we're gonna be, uh, that it'll be written up before then, so the week after next, beginning of the week or the middle of the week, you're gonna be notified to come in here and sign that decision. And once we submit it to, uh, the clerk, uh, Ross will notify Mr. Perry that it's, he starts a twenty day start, and he can do whatever he wishes.
Just so you know, I'll be on vacation, um, the twenty-third to the twenty-ninth.
Of?
Of, of, of July. I know you said it's the week after, but if, if your destination sooner or something, or some circumstances change, I would not be able to come in until
Yeah.
the Monday, the thirty-first, or that week after, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, good, good to know. I think should probably have it written up after that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just didn't want it to, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Kenny, was he clear on his, like, uh, you, you made him, you know, give me options to withdraw without prejudice, was he clear as to what his options were and stuff?
I, I've had several conversations. One, one was over here, and then at least two on the phone, and every time I told him he should speak to his attorney.
Okay.
Hmm.
He also has a brother that's involved. The brother's actually living in the house, so he had, you know, consulted with his brother. He had all the options. Even if we heard the case again, there was no guarantee.
Right.
That was, you know, I can't tell him, oh, yeah, we're gonna change our mind.
Right, and.
Uh, there was no guarantee that, uh, the decision would not be the same.
Mm-hmm.
So he.
I was just thinking of that, so it's mediating things, that's all.
And I had said, and Mar- Yeah, Marguerite and I had discussed it, and if, that was probably going to be the cheaper option for everyone.
Right, but I.
Was, was to.
His concern was, obviously, that I couldn't give him a definite decision as to how he's gonna come out, so.
Right, he would rather put a decision to handle somebody else.
You know, it's, it's probably a two-year process, you know, to appeal. It's gonna cost the town money, that.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not the first case, it's ever processed money, it won't be the last case.
Right. Right.
So, uh, he's made that decision. He's given, been given all options.
Yep.
And, uh, he's made a decision, so.
Now, will it be the same three voting members?
It will be the same three, assuming that when the case comes before the board, all those three members are here that night.
Okay.
So if somebody isn't here, we're gonna pick another person. But the goal is not to change the voting members.
Right, gotcha.
The people, they made the decision based on information.
But, no, if he takes, if he takes us to court, my question, like you just mentioned, it'll be the same. I just, there is no guarantee as who's gonna be put. If he goes, takes us to court, it's gonna be remanded back to us.
It may or may not. I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen with the case.
It doesn't, I don't know that it, it doesn't have to be the same.
Yeah, I was a little confused on that too, because, I mean, I haven't been around for this, so if this court overrules it, I thought the decision was just in his favor. I didn't realize that.
No, no, it has to be, we, it could find in his favor.
No.
Right.
The attorney, our attorney is, and I wanna get into legalities of this case here, because this is all gonna be used for, but our attorney and their attorney could come to some decision, let's bring this back before the board. And, but we start the process again.
I see, I see.
And to be fair, uh, I think it should still be the, the same voting members.
I, I agree to that, as a, as a, no, absolutely, absolutely. No, I agree with that.
We're not gonna pull fast one. So it's, 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 it's anything to do, so.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No, sorry, did you withdraw?
No, yeah. Uh, the second case that we have here is, uh, the police station. I need, uh, Greg Logan and Zach to sign the petition.
Ken, did you read Peter's?
Yeah.
Um, resignation.
Yes.
I guess, Mark.
No, I read everybody. I read it fast, but.
Well, there wasn't a lot to it. It was pretty direct and to the point, as Peter usually is.
Okay, on the new business, I had asked, uh, Rich Federoff to come in, because we had three concerns about the, uh, the project over there. Do you have that letter from the, uh, did you give me that letter from the sewer department?
It is on top of one of these files.
Okay, that should, should be right there.
Oh, yep. So that is from the treasurer.
Numbers in here.
No, I think it's right on top of the inside. Sorry.
Okay. So there were, uh, three concerns, three complaints that we got. One was from National Grid. Uh, there's power lines that, that are in, that go over in phase two, and there's a driveway going up to it. There was a manhole that had no cover on it. So National, so National Grid, uh, first of all, I invited him to be here tonight, and he can't make it tonight. It's his fortieth anniversary, and I give him permission not to be here.
Okay.
His wife had made reservations, yada, 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 and good for him. Uh, so National Grid contacted us and said, hey, there's an exposed manhole. I went and checked out it, checked on it last week. I went with Mr. Federoff to the property Monday to go, my three concerns. And he said he would have that fixed the next day. I didn't go yesterday, I went there today, it's fixed. It's got a little, you know, cement, concrete around it. These, uh, there's a cover on it, so that's all taken care of. National Grid had put a fence around it to, you know, some of the kids, it's right next to the playground.
Oh, really, of course it is.
It was, I think somebody stole the man, metal cover. There's some damage there or something.
Okay.
Uh, but, so that's been taken care of. The, the second concern was that we got a, a call from somebody that when you enter the stone gate, you kinda have to go over a curb, and this person indicated that she's had to have her, her wheels aligned because of this a couple times. What it is, is the, there's a drainage, uh, there's a drain there. Somebody put, he claims this before him, put tar around it like a, almost like a curb. It's two or three inches above the road, and then he was, uh, submitting, uh, tar. It was like, it was like a policy. Coming in, it's a one-way, you hit the bump, and then you hit right into this, this hole. He indicated that he thought that that, and believes, and he probably could be right, I gotta check with Tom Ferry, that this is, uh, state property, that's, the state owns that part of that road.
They do.
They probably do. But he offered to fill in, uh, with, uh, hot tar that, the hole, and he did that. And he filled in another hole that was on the, the road too. You gotta understand that the final coat is on the road, he's got binding down there, and it's breaking up. It's been there seven, eight, nine, nine years.
Too long.
Too long. And then we got a call from a neighbor, and I actually spoke to her, went to the house, and she said that her driveway, it's breaking up at the end of her driveway, and she wanted that fixed. And Federoff had, in the last fall, he had put some tar in part of the area. There were worse driv- driveways over there. I saw some driveways, actually stopped in another house, but I thought that was the house that was complaining about it. This isn't that bad. And it basically, it's the final coat that has to go on, it's gonna take care of that. He's gonna go in, when he completes the driveways, uh, he's gonna cut into everybody's, uh, completes the road, cutting everybody's driveway, cut into it, and have the road go right up to the driveway. So I think that's gonna take care of that. I invited her to the meeting to know if she wants to come in and chat and questions.
Ken.
What are they scheduled for?
Yeah, if they put the top binder on it, is that gonna make that inverted even worse at the drain, at the end of the road?
I, I don't think so, 'cause if they leave that there, and then, you know, they don't.
So it's up, it's not down?
It's up, it's up, yeah. And then there was, you hit that, it's a curve, like a curve, it's two or three inches, you hit that, and then you go into this hole, the tower broken up.
Yes.
He fixed the tar, and he fixed it, at least it went on the spot that I, that I noticed.
Okay.
So this obviously predates me, but how long has that binder course been down?
Oh, I think it's been down from, uh, the time he sold the first house, which could be, uh, this case was, I think we approved it in two thousand four. I don't know when they started the, uh, infrastructure.
Been down, it's seven or eight.
Oh, cheers.
Oh, gosh, I can't remember. It's gonna be a bad road.
It's, it's so long.
I was gonna say, do we, uh, it's probably not the question, I don't know if it's a question to ask here, but do we check it, does anybody check it before they put the wearing course down, if that binder's still acceptable?
Yeah, no, I, I think the, uh, the building inspector will be doing that. No, I, I think, I have concerns about it.
After so long.
Building inspector.
Yeah.
You know, it, it doesn't look well, and he may have to take it up. But, uh, Mr. Federoff has been sent a letter from the sewer department. If you remember, he came before us, just telling us that the, they wanna put the pump station in it. If you remember, uh, he had sold six houses with these E, EF ones, I think they're called. Instead of.
They were temporary, though, right?
They were temporary. He told these six families that this is temporary, so instead of put the pump station, station in, you'll be connected to the pump station. He has, after those six houses, he's got ten more houses to put in.
And he wants to do them all with temporary?
He wanted to now, uh, you know, put temporary ones in.
It's sixteen nights together, right?
And they're responsible. When they break down, they, I went to the sewer commission meeting, uh, he indicated to them that these last about twenty years, and then the, the homeowners would have to replace it. There's no guarantee it's gonna be twenty years. You've had six families being told, uh, they're gonna get town sewerage.
Right.
Instead of these, these separate things. And the sewer, uh, commission basically felt that if all six was okay with the way it is now, they would not make them do the pump station. Or if there was any split in it, they would ask them to do the pump station, and there was a split. There was three to three. Uh, so, the letter that he got.
I think it should go through, too, Ken. The pump station is part of the, part of the deal.
July twelve, uh, twenty seventeen, the, uh, the Board of Sewer Commission has sent to Mr. Federoff. The town dining Board of Sewer Commission is met on July tenth twenty seventeen. At this meeting, the future of the sewer system as it pertains to Sturgie Land was discussed. The board unanimously voted to reject the request to use one E, uh, E one pumps for the remaining ten homes of what is now called Phase One of your project. If you wish to continue with the project, the pump station would be required for future sewer needs. The board also unanimously, unanimously decided that any pump station built needs to be large enough to accommodate what is currently called Phase Two, so there's another nineteen houses for Phase Two that he indicated he doesn't wanna do. If you have any questions, please contact the office. We'll be happy to place you on the next agenda, uh, next agenda.
So that really takes the burden off of us, doesn't it?
It does, but he, uh, as response, as a result of that, he sent a letter to the, uh, sewer commission, basically saying he wants to go before the next meeting to discuss it further. They've made the decision. He indicated he wants to go before them on July twenty-fourth. That's not the next meeting, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but.
Well, can we just, can we discuss that now?
I think we can save. Uh, well, I, it's on the agenda, yes.
Okay, well, 'cause, you know, when we permitted all this, and the basic thing that was, uh, two phases, and it was to accommodate the second phase as well as these sixteen houses on the phase, and in the interest of the town, that pumping station was gonna be located so that it would be accessible from Center Street, if it continued on, to avoid all the concrete, uh, not concrete, but the stone and ledge that is over here by the intersection of Route One. We discussed that in the planning, and that's why that was in. In the interest of the town and all concerned, it isn't like it was just the six. You've got sixteen and, uh.
And there'll be nineteen.
Isn't, I don't think there's any benefit to us to, to repeal it.
No.
Especially with the, the sewer department not on board with it either.
No, the. No, it's, it was one of our conditions, I gotta put a pump station in. And that, that pump station actually is in Phase Two.
Which he didn't wanna do, is on.
Which he doesn't.
We have been very lenient about this.
Yeah.
I mean, granted him, we'd leave one to fifty-five and over.
He's coming before us a couple, it's coming before us a couple times, so I think we ought to support the sewer commission. I don't, I don't picture them changing my mind.
We don't have time to think about it, but anyway, buddy.
And, yeah, he's not coming before us for a while. He's, hasn't paid, uh, the May taxes on his property. August versus, we all know, taxes are, maybe you don't know. Taxes.
Not yet.
Uh, taxes gonna be due again, so he's gonna owe more money.
You don't have to remind him.
So, we're not going to, uh, hear the case, basically. I mean, anything, any mistakes he's done over there, we're gonna bring him in, we're gonna discuss those, like, I wanted him to come in tonight. He's satisfied, at least me anyway. Everybody can go over there and take a look at the property.
Kenny, is it good, is there any money in the fund to, to cover any of, like, uh, for these potholes, or if we would have to dip into it, is there a covenant with us on this property?
It's my understanding that there's some kind of reserve on the road. Somebody had mentioned it at the sewer commission meeting. I don't know. How much it is, that's something we'll have to talk to, uh, Marguerite on. Uh, but there is some kind of, you know, remember, this is our sec, that was our second, second one. We're all learning, and we have five now.
And this is the second owner?
And it's the second owner. I says, well, I'm not saying.
So if the residents that have the temporary facilities in now, if they have to tie into the pump station.
It'll be at their expense, not the home owners'.
Their, their expense, and I'm guessing, uh, at, at Mr. Federoff's expense.
Mr. Federoff's expense.
It was sold with storage.
Yeah, and I'm guessing he doesn't have the infrastructure in.
He has the infrastructure, he just needs to put a pumping station.
Yeah, but I'm not sure if it's good, what you're talking about, the infrastructure for the.
From the house to the, to the pumping station.
Yes, yeah.
From the road, you mean, from the road to the house.
Right, I didn't know if he'd go ahead and put that in.
If everybody kept these, uh, E ones, they're, they're totally responsible for that.
Right.
Those pumpings.
Once you go to the pump station, we're all responsible for it. And that's the way I think it should be.
Right. Yeah.
But those pumps that are in the houses now, just pump it to the road. All they would have to do is take the pump out, it would still be drawn to, to the existing sewers. The pipes are all lit. You just have a pump in the house to pump it out.
Yeah, 'cause it goes somewhere.
Right.
It goes pumps out to the street.
Right, but there's probably some area in Phase Two that they're gonna have to break up, at the pump, you know, at the pump station, towards, so.
Well, if he's.
I think the, the sewer department made a, uh, sewer commissioners made a, a good decision.
If he, even if he doesn't decide to do Phase Two, he could put a stub to interstate Phase Two and still put a pumping station in, 'cause the pumping sta, that's up, you know. If, now, I don't know what the, that's a really, not what I was, he's, uh, you know, it's just, that's what it is, he needs to do it.
He needs to do it, and, uh.
They made the deal, you know, and the market is, there's a market available, so they can't tell us that the market's not available to them.
But that was mentioned, he mentioned at the commissioners meeting, that houses are selling. I said, I got up and I said, absolutely not, there's other projects, other developments.
So only hope.
Yeah.
As quick as you can build them, they're buying them.
Yeah, really.
Well, when people drive in and they see a development that's been taking as long as, you know, there's potholes in the road, except that not even too many people is.
Twenty-sixties, sort of, holiday right now.
Exactly.
Obviously, you see some neighbors you don't wanna own anymore.
And they, and that day is being finished.
But anyways.
But somebody, somebody was living there for some, I heard that somebody lived there for eleven years, so that binding must have been down for eleven years.
Oh, wow. It's been down a long time.
Wow.
Yeah, so. So, he's not gonna put the binding down until he finishes those houses, I'm sure, and gets the sewer trials set up and.
I think we're in grammar school, we're gonna do it.
But anyways.
All right.
So, uh, everybody's got their book?
Yes.
The Bowski book. You can keep your old ones, as I was pointing out to me, there's no need for the town to have the new ones, so to keep the old ones.
All the old ones, okay.
Uh, but these are the new ones, no.
So you want the green ones back?
No, we don't.
A little light with time reading?
Okay.
Yeah. Ross would have to move them over to the, uh.
We really need to do it, especially the first part of zoning.
So, uh, we got a fairly good deal, um, on the books. Uh, they're very expensive, they're over four hundred dollars a book, but if we got them before, one of them before July first, uh, we paid, just, we paid for the book and we got the addendum for free.
Oh.
If we waited till July first, we would pay for the book and paid another two hundred dollars for this over here, so.
Well, is this an upgrade thing?
It's an up, yeah, it's an upgrade on it, and, uh, they were automatically sending us to us, but I think we've decided not to get them automatically, because we wanna make sure the price is.
Right, you're right. I can.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, at your leisure, take a look at it, 'cause things have changed since the last time.
Yeah, of course.
That's what a whole book looks like, yeah.
It is, it is.
Exactly, it is, yeah. What that book looked like, some of them.
So that's that. Uh, I'm gonna ask the, uh, the members here if we can meet in August. And the reason why I'm saying that is that we have three new cases coming up, one's already paid, and I wonder if we can meet in August. Now, I'm, as you, as your new chairman, if we ever come across a month.
Sixteen.
Well, we don't really have any business, I don't mind kicking, we'll look at it next month. Uh, and this could be January, it could be whatever, 'cause we know we've had slow months.
Hmm.
Uh, but we do have three cases, and it's gonna be busy, me, my, if we push off to September, and see if we're gonna be busier. We've got three cases coming in, and they're not easy cases.
I'm gonna twist my arm.
Right?
That's enough.
I waited for me to be appointed chairman before I brought that back in. All right, is everybody gonna be on vacation or anything like that?
No.
In August, no.
We'll do it.
I'm not a person.
On the week after, appoint one more.
Okay, well, it may, it makes sense, so, no, we got, we, uh, the selectmen have been asking, uh, every two weeks now for replacement for your, for your father. We have one person interested in, but I, I've asked that they continue posting that, because the last time we had three applicants, and I chose, obviously I chose Jason, so I don't, I just don't want one person to come in.
Just go with the first person.
Go with the first one. I want two or three people that I can, you know, get information from them, I ask them all the same questions.
I, I agree.
I, yeah, I would agree to that too. I agree with that, I support that decision.
And, yeah, so, okay, so if you don't mind, we're gonna hold off, you know, whenever I get to three, I'll just interview them, and we may have at the next meeting, I don't think so.
And, uh, just out of curiosity, how long do we go until, if we don't have any, like, December comes, we don't have any?
If, I'm saying, I'm saying Sep- September comes, and we have no other, you know, unless it's, it's still announcing it, uh, we don't have anybody interested, I'm probably gonna interview this person.
No way. Okay, okay.
Doesn't mean I automatically have to, uh, accept that process.
But, you're, at least.
There's, there's never been a timeline. As long as we have at least four people, we could have a meeting, you know.
Right.
But we always like to have enough, 'cause sometimes, you, you people haven't been this fortunate, uh, mis, uh, unfortunate, so we've had some times where we were beaten three or four times a month because of the workload.
Oh, really?
It's the, it's the forty Bs, and I don't see any forty Bs coming in, in the near future.
Last year, we were working on that, we were almost every week. Yes.
Yeah.
But you're the forty B, you're busy.
And I think Peter said it was like nine hundred hours altogether.
I'm sure he put a lot of hours.
Yeah, he put in, he put in that, 'cause he has the, the work.
Absolutely did, absolutely.
Means, so Bob has worked on it, you know, we, we appoint a member to run the whole show behind the forty Bs. You've done it?
One person. Yes.
I've done it. Uh, I know, like, Greg, uh, he probably should get it next time, but he really, he spent so much time on the other one. I'm not sure I'm gonna put you in that position. But we may have a little bit of, of while before this, no, I mean, I know this, uh.
Thank you. It takes a lot of time, it really does.
The first, uh.
And you had it till eleven o'clock at night.
Right.
And we're restricted now, too. We're supposed to have it from the time we receive it, we're supposed to get it done within six months. We've never met that deadline ever.
No, we've asked for extensions, and, and they've been willing to give it to us.
They've been willing to give it to us, 'cause they used to, there was no timeline, but now there is a timeline.
And what happened, with the early ones anyway, we would all go to the meetings, so that if somebody, somebody was sick that was bothering on it, we didn't do that with the last one.
Right.
I know, I, I went to a couple meetings.
Mm-hmm. Well, any of the voting members, we were falling asleep, 'cause the two lawyers were just talking, there was nothing for us to do, but just sit there, but you had to be there.
So you, I mean, Joe wanted to. Yes, I, I was really tuned off of the one long meeting that I went to, and it was just so bickering.
Yeah, it was done.
But I understand they're gonna do something different there, so that's, that's good.
Well, Kenny had mentioned there, when we do a forty B, the voting members that are voted have to attend all of the public meetings.
Yeah.
And we always had other people go, because if someone was to miss a meeting, that person had to be someone who has attended every meeting that we reappoint, or they win by default, and we can't ever allow that to happen.
Right.
Yeah, so, so we may have it to, to all go.
That's the re, full reason to win.
Uh, but this, the last one, just, I mean, it just dragged on and on and on.
And they didn't even do it. I shouldn't have said it that way. It isn't about winning or losing, but they have the right to, uh, hold us in default, though.
Yeah.
And they, whatever, uh, relief they were asking for on the variances they get, so it would be, you know, it's not, it's detrimental to the town.
Yeah, and it, but it's not automatic that they get every, wait, we go through all the waves, it's very time consuming, uh.
It's just important that everybody be there and attend.
Yeah, but I can, I tell you that I personally failed for the, uh, the last one, so, I love, do you go to any of those meetings?
Some of it's woods, I went to a few, too, uh, because of other outstanding things, you know, like, just stepped, stepped back away.
Uh, is there any, uh, public input? Let's see anybody here.
Speak now, for your vote, please.
Yes.
I asked the August, did we decide we're meeting? Everyone said they could attend. Bob, you good?
Yes. Yeah, so it's gonna, it's all.
Yeah, it was just off camera, I had to do that, make it feel like I'm doing it my favor. You don't have to thank me, Ken.
Yeah, so it's. It's August.
August sixteenth.
August sixteenth, at, uh, seven o'clock. And could you?
August sixteen. Same time, seven.
Seven o'clock. And Ross, you're gonna confirm, uh, with, uh, is it Heidi, regarding next week's meeting, that you think, she mentioned that we have a meeting next week, the joint meeting
Oh, yeah.
for the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board?
Okay.
Okay, when?
We think it's next Wednesday, and usually at six o'clock, but she's gonna be primitive.
Okay.
Let us know.
And I would be awake. I'm on it, I'm making sure for that.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
I would go with.
Date on that. Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, it's, they're gonna bring it.
What was the conflict, though? There was something else going on? Why, why would we? She got, she's got a. She has something going on, okay. Ross will answer, not go ahead.
Yeah, next week, right, you, Ross, you may not be able to attend next week. But the attorney, uh, they're bringing in the planning board attorney, at least, and she could not meet the, well, we're supposed to meet in June, she can meet with us.
Okay. The attorney. Okay.
So now she's gonna be able to meet, uh, next week, I guess, so.
That'll be good, nice.
Get that going.
I promise we won't be a storm.
I'll confirm that in the morning, and then.
Yes, just like that. So, uh, we've got two sets of minutes to approve or change, uh, as everybody read the, May twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion then to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
I can't make the motion, so.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the meetings from May twenty-fourth seventeen.
You?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No oppose? Eyes have it?
Sign and oppose.
Uh, I have a question about the June twenty-first one.
Okay, that's the next one, yep.
Um, just be, because of what this, this involves, the, just, uh, the voting of the case that is going to be appealed, I just wanna get a couple things.
Yep, yeah.
Um, when it says no butters, uh, complained or had any concerns, is it worth sitting that they were no butters at all?
Present.
Present.
Present at all?
Yeah, they were no butters, is that?
Okay, because I just didn't want it, it to be read as that, that means they were in favor, 'cause none were there to say they were in favor either.
Do you know what it is, Chris?
Yeah, 'cause we don't know.
And we don't, okay, so, but it just said no butters complained or had any con, had any concerns, it didn't say they weren't there. You would have.
Was that, I think that went with someone's, before that speaking.
Yeah, and I, we.
You. Oh, I'm so.
Bob or Greg.
Oh, so that was, okay, so that was Greg's.
Yes, I see what's right, yeah, I see what's right.
I, I understand, okay, I'm sorry, I, I thought it was you stating that they were no butters.
Oh, no.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, that's Greg's speaking.
No, it was Greg.
Okay, 'cause that's why I, I was confused when, uh, it had said, uh, not, when I, when you had said that I had said not a valid reason to approve, I was like, following along reading, I was like, I wanted to be clear where did it's, what was I saying, what, what was I saying that to, but I understand, now I understand because that's been cleared up, okay.
Yeah.
Uh.
So then I have no, I had no other questions.
You're, you're okay with that, then?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make the motion to accept the meetings from June twenty-first seventeen, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No oppose? Gonna approve. Do you wanna be heard, or?
N- oh, no, I was just, uh, I'd like to, uh, get, get a little information, I'd like to, uh, get whatever forms are necessary for submitting a, uh, uh, the conceptual plan for preliminary approval.
Are you looking for a special permit or variance? I, the, this is the, okay, this is the zoning board.
No variant, no special pit or variant. Okay.
Need to go to the building inspector.
Can they open up there now?
I don't believe you see it.
I didn't, I didn't see this call today, so I'm not sure.
I don't think.
Are there any forms avail, needed, that it might be available online?
But what are you trying to get, present a conceptual plan for?
Uh, just, just for, uh, subdividing my property. Uh, just, just for, uh, subdividing my property.
Do you have adequate frontage and area, like, I?
I believe so, but I, I wanna get whatever forms are necessary, fill them, fill them out, and have that reviewed, but
Probably out to you, the creator.
I don't, I don't have that information, at least it does in probably somewhere there.
Not us, not us.
Is that planning board?
If you're planning board, that's.
The planning board, it wouldn't be us, we only can do two.
Two, two, two lots?
Two lots.
About four, like a Form A type of thing, is that pretty?
No, we're, we're.
Oh, yeah, you'd go to, uh, the planning board, four nights, uh, and should you get in touch with Heidi then?
Planning, yeah, she walked us through all the guidelines.
She will be in in the morning at eight, so.
Okay.
If you drive around to the back of the building, if you come in that bottom door, her office is right there on your right.
There, right.
On your right side.
Yeah, to get an idea, I'll, I'll, I'll probably just call, or at least to get it, so I just have a little information.
Yeah, call the planning board and ask for Heidi, and she'll, she's probably gonna ask for her anyway, but, uh.
Yeah, okay. I, I appreciate you, Paul, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so is there anything else, uh, to discuss, anything after that, uh, Ross?
I don't think so.
Did you want one?
Are you all available, other than Zach, for Wednesday night next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you'll confirm that with all the members?
I think my wife will let me out of the house.
Well, we're spending a little while, he's.
Exactly, so, yeah.
So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Somebody make the motion.
I'm second to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no oppose.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. I'm just making sure it's all.
See you on the flip side.
But it's, it's gonna be a record.